Welcome to our board meeting, full house tonight. You guys are all here for the election results, right? In closed session tonight, we accepted with regrets retirements of Carolyn Keeby, Teresa Hilton, and Lisa Miller. Wishing you all the best. We have a few recognitions. Do I have one more?
Yeah.
And Diane Martin, sorry. My notes were bad. All right, recognitions?
Okay. Number one on the list are mathletes. Students from Rolla Middle School demonstrated their outstanding talent and mathematical prowess at the Missouri Council of Teachers of Mathematics, MCTM competitions. Showcasing their dedication and excellence at every stage. On Saturday, February the 22nd, students completed or competed in the MCTM Qualifying Math Competition held at Rolla Middle School with several advancing to the Southwest Regionals in Springfield on April the 12th. The following students represented Rolla Middle School with distinction, so, oh, you're all coming up, this is good. We'll just wait for you to all get in place. And if you raise your hand up when I call your name, then Mrs. Jenkins will give you your document, certificate. Jackson Adams. Alexander Boe. Zach Forbes. Keaton Carr. Jalen Schukart. Harper Turnbaugh. Mustafa Asharova. Corbin DuRette. Nathan Hartle. Vanessa Lozavon. Max Shualy. Levi Welch. Mason Bean. Vida Falcone. Reed Marzuko. Ram Sadie. Elena Smith. And Kayden Wilkinson. If I mispronounced your names, I apologize. I had no time to practice. At Regionals, Rolla Middle School competed against 25 schools and 168 competitors with Jason, oh, Jackson Adams, Vanessa Lozavon, Jalen Schukart, Harper Turnbaugh, Max Shualy, Mason Bean, Alexander Boe, Nathan Hartle, and Kayden Wilkinson proudly representing their school. Their incredible performances led Rolla Middle School to secure first place overall, a remarkable achievement. Additionally, several students qualified to compete at the state competition in Columbia on May the 10th. Fourth grade, Jackson Adams and Vanessa Lozavon. Fifth grade, Max Shualy. And sixth grade, Mason Bean, Alexander Boe, and Nathan Hartle. These accomplishments highlight the commitment of Rolla Middle School students guided by the unwavering support of their dedicated sponsors, Crystal Thompson, Brooke Wisdom, Kim Ray, Tracy Hubner, Becca Burrell, Tina Taggart, and Jennifer Pippin. Everybody did a fantastic job and we can be proud of their hard work and success. Congratulations Bulldogs.
Ms. Thompson, did you want to say anything?
I just want to say that you-
You have to go to the microphone.
I'm so sorry.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I just want to say that while each of these students have displayed a dedication, perseverance, and a true passion for math, it's important to also recognize that the successes go beyond their individual triumphs. It's a testament to the collective efforts of our dedicated teachers, parents, and the community who have all supported, nurtured, and encouraged these bright minds throughout their journey. Their guidance and belief in the potential of these students have played a vital role in their accomplishments. Tonight, we come together to recognize these students and celebrate them and congratulate their remarkable achievements.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I remember those days ago, those competitions.
I was a mathlete, were you a mathlete?
I had kids that were, and I was too.
Yes.
Okay, I can do that. All right, next are the RHS wrestlers. The Board of Education is honored to recognize the remarkable wrestlers at Rolla High School for their outstanding performance at district and state competitions. Congratulations to the following athletes for their achievements. At 106 pounds, RJ Nguyen. Twenty-six and twelve-
They haven't come in yet.
They haven't come in yet. Well, wait on them.
They were in the hallway.
Somebody call the wrestlers in.
They're coming. Kinders, kinders usher on this way.
Only so many can fit through the door at the same time. We're gonna start over when they get here. Oh. Got the stroller going out, then they get up.
Here they come.
We'll give them one second to get through the door. I'm gonna start over again because they missed the important part here. The Board of Education is honored to recognize the remarkable wrestlers at Rolla High School for their outstanding performance at district and state competitions. Congratulations to the following athletes for their achievements. At 106 pounds, RJ Nguyen, who was 26 and 12 as a freshman. At 120 pounds, Carter Libart. Twenty-five and 12 as a freshman. At 132 pounds, Carson Mickam. He was 36 and 15, a three-time state qualifier, a three-time NWA Academic All-State, a three-time NWCA Scholar All-American, and 100 career wins this season. 157 pounds, Kayden Kinder. Finished second in the state. He was 50 and five, a single-season win record. Fourth on the career pin total, over 150 wins, three times district champion, four times state qualifier, two times state finalist, took first, second, and third at state in his high school career. FZN Kenlok and Branson Champion, three-time MWA Academic All-State, four-time NWCA Scholar All-American. At 165 pounds, Jack Morokowitz. Thirty-eight and eight was his, he was a two-time state qualifier, two-time MWA Academic All-State, two-time NWCA Scholar All-American, and a Kenlok Champion. At 100 pounds, Kiara Sederberg. Cedarburg. Thirty-nine and six. Three-time state qualifier, 100 career wins this season. Owensville, Knoll, Jeffersonville, Kenlok, and Hickman Champion. Three-time MWA Academic All-State, three-time NWCA Scholar All-American. At 125 pounds, Victoria Willey.
Wiley.
Wiley, thank you. Thirty-one and seventeen. Three-time state qualifier.
She's also a Scholar All-American.
Okay. Also a Scholar All-American, Coach says. Okay, at 155 pounds, Serenity Tilford. She finished fourth in the state. Forty-five and six with 35 pins, which is a school record. Second all-time for boys and girls in career total pins. First female, two-time state placer, three-time state qualifier. Owensville, Knoll, FZN, Jeffersonville, and Hickman Champion voted Knoll Invitational Outstanding Wrestler for the second year in a row. Three-time MWA Academic All-State, four-time NWCA Scholar All-American. At 170 pounds, Delaney Miller, 28 and 10. Owensville Champion, NWA Academic All-State, four-time NWCA Scholar All-American. At 190 pounds, Kaylee Regal. Twenty-seven and 14. Knoll and Kenlok Champion, NWA Academic All-State, three-time NWCA Scholar All-American. These accomplishments are a testament to the strength and excellence of our programs at Rolla High School nurtured by the dedication of our talented coaches and supporters. Special thanks to the coaches for their unwavering support and guidance. Marty Hauck, Kyle Meyer, Jesse Hullett, Melissa Perkins, Taylor Hindbaugh, and John Sacks. We are incredibly proud of our wrestlers for their hard work and achievements this season. Your dedication, perseverance, and accomplishments have brought immense pride to our school and community. Thank you, Coach. Picture first and then comment.
Parents, do you want to take a picture?
Yes, the parents do.
Come on now.
Coach? Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 So, we want to say thank you to you guys. You know, it's always a privilege and an honor to be recognized by the school board. The work that you guys do is unbelievable. You know, we teach reps in our program, that's our goal, so it's relationships, education, passion, servant leadership. We do a million repetitions in the room with the representatives of our program and our school when we go out and when they graduate. And that's servant leadership, we're learning that from you guys. And over the last year of the many things that you guys have dealt with, it's unbelievable and it's tremendous. And so, we thank you for your time, your effort. We know that it's a thankless job sometimes, and it's a lot of hard work and a lot of emotional toll, and so, we say thank you for that. You know, these athletes, because of what you guys have provided for us with the unbelievable facility, with this being an Olympic year, this past year, we had several Olympians that have came through the room and worked with us. Our staff's worked with them. We've taken several kids overseas, a couple kids overseas anyways, we've taken them all across the country. Serenity was also an athlete that got to attend the European Championships more than medals, so it's more than just the medals and the winning, it was a cultural event and experience. She's the only American female to be able to do that, so it's a tremendous honor there. She also earned the NWCA Leadership and Character Award. Through that, the team, you know, obviously, they did well. We don't, the wins and losses are gonna come with it. This group of seniors, they had over 100 wins for their career. Once again, this season, we had 28 wins, we were 28 and 6. So, when you look at percentages and those things, you know, the kids are doing very, very well. We have over 400 in our program, to give you an idea. So, there's over 400 kids in our program. The youth club that works directly with us, they just bought a, purchased a mat for each elementary school as well, so we can continue to grow. And that way, the PE instructors and everybody else, you know, can have, start teaching our sport a little bit more for us, so, you know, feeding underneath, so. We just want to say thank you for what you guys do, truly appreciate your work, your efforts, and allowing us to do what we do on a daily basis and providing for us. So, thank you very much, we appreciate it. And let's know, there's always projects that we are looking for, so, you know, unfortunately, fortunately, we've had a lot here lately and it's been great. So, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next on the list is a recognition of heroic acts for Santiago Salazar and Austin Miller McElroy. The Board of Education would like to recognize and commend Santiago Salazar and Austin Miller McElroy for their exemplary courage, quick thinking, and commitment to helping others. On February the 20th, these two students showcased extraordinary compassion and community spirit when they heard someone calling for help while offering the shovel snow. Their decision to immediately call 911 ultimately led to the rescue of a resident who had been in critical need of assistance for several days. Their actions not only highlight the importance of being observant and proactive, but also serve as an inspiring example of kindness and bravery for us all. The Board is incredibly proud to celebrate their achievements and applauds them for making a life-saving difference in their community. Thank you, Santiago and Austin, for your heroic efforts. You made Rolla proud. Next, Alicia Alyssa Goshi, Fine Arts Essay winner. Alyssa Goshi, Vice President of the National Art Honor Society, has achieved an incredibly credible honor. Her essay has, was selected as the Missouri Alliance for Arts Education 9-12 grade Fine Arts Essay winner for 2025. The Board is delighted to recognize her extraordinary achievement, accomplishment, which is a testament to her talent and dedication to the arts. On Wednesday, April the 9th, Alyssa was recognized at the State Capitol Rotunda where she had the special opportunity to share a portion of her work during the Fine Arts Education Day. Her achievement highlights the importance of artistic expression and advocacy in education, reinforcing the power of student voices and shaping the future of the arts. Alyssa's creativity and passion continue to inspire the school community. Congratulations, Alyssa. Your commitment to the arts makes a lasting impact, and we're proud of you, so thank you. Okay. Next is Dr. Snitker. Missouri Association of Secondary Principals Mid-Level Principal of the Year. All right, the Board of Education is thrilled to celebrate Dr. Tori Snitker, Principal of Rolla Junior High School, for being named the 2025 Missouri Association of Secondary School Principals Mid-Level Principal of the Year. I really don't want to be in the picture. But I gotta stay close to the microphone. Dr. Snitker's leadership vision and unwavering dedication to students and staff embody the very best of education, as Clark Mershon, Executive Director of MOA SSP, highlighted. Middle school is a pivotal time for growth and development, and it takes an exceptional leader to foster a culture of learning and belonging. Dr. Snitker's commitment to excellence has strengthened the Rolla Junior High community, helping students thrive during this critical stage of their education. To honor this incredible achievement, Dr. Snitker was surprised with a special assembly featuring the RHS Drumline, her family, and the entire RJH student body as she was presented with this prestigious award. Congratulations, Dr. Snitker. Your impact on Rolla Junior High and the entire Rolla Bulldog community is truly inspiring. You may say some words at the microphone if you would like.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, this is like the third speech that I've had to give about this, and the first one, I was totally shocked by Dr. Dare and Dr. Fulton, because we were going to look at the weight room. And we get over there, and I'm talking about all these things I want to do, and then all of a sudden, Dr. Dare is gone, and he comes back, "Well, let's go look at the gym." And I was like, "Okay, let's go look at the gym." And so, we get in there, and I'm first upset, I'm like, "Why are all these kids sitting in here?" You know, I just, at first glance. And then they had a confetti little thing that they shot off at me, and then I was so shocked, I kind of blacked out a little bit for a few minutes. And so, I gave a speech, I think I was, I just spoke in quotes. And then I jokingly, I told them up at state when I gave my second speech that I spent probably three sleepless nights, so I prefer the shocked speech where you kind of blackout over the one where you actually have to prepare, so. But I would say right now with this, that I, just like Marty told you, I'm deeply grateful for the work that you guys do and the support that you provide us in our buildings. The only thing that I can say is that it is an honor and a privilege to be at Rolla Junior High daily and to be around those staff and students. I love them deeply, and so, I appreciate all the work you guys do. And if you notice, you each have a little brown envelope as School Board Appreciation Month came and went, and we didn't have a chance to give those to you because hashtag tornado. And so, we finally got time to do that, and so, I hope that you find those envelopes and enjoy your Sonic drink. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item six. Tanner Beistel, the Missouri Outstanding Beginning Teacher. The Board is honored to celebrate Tanner Beistel for being named a Missouri Outstanding Beginning Teacher. The Missouri Outstanding Beginning Teacher Award is presented by the Missouri Association of Colleges for Teacher Education to recognize exceptional first or second-year teachers across the state. This distinguished recognition showcases Tanner's unwavering dedication, passion, and the meaningful impact he has already made in the classroom. As a new educator, he has demonstrated an exceptional commitment to student success, creating engaging learning environments and inspiring those around him. His enthusiasm and hard work set a strong foundation for future generations of learners. Congratulations, Tanner, your dedication to education excellence is truly admirable. We are proud to have you as part of our school community and look forward to all the great things you will accomplish. It's gotta be straight. Item seven, the Rolla Junior High StuCo. The Board of Education is proud to recognize-
Hold on a second.
They're coming in now.
Oh, they're coming in. This is the kind of problem to have. You don't have a big enough boardroom to have everybody in here at the same time. I know. This is a good problem to have. Okay. I'm gonna start over here. If you'll raise your hand later, I guess, there's no names in here, so, all right. The Board of Education is proud to recognize Rolla Junior High School Student Council for receiving the Missouri Association of Student Council's Honor Council Gold Award. This prestigious honor presented at the 2025 MASC State Convention highlights the council's outstanding commitment to student leadership, school spirit, and community service. Rolla Junior High School's Student Council demonstrated exceptional involvement at the local, district, and state levels, earning recognition among only 66 councils across Missouri that met the rigorous criteria for this award. Your dedication to fostering student engagement, leadership development, and a positive school environment exemplifies the values of Rolla Public Schools. The Board extends its congratulations to the Student Council members and their advisors for this well-deserved recognition. Their hard work and leadership continue to make a lasting impact on our school community. Kayla, everybody, you got a center on the- Good to be in.
So, before you all go sit down, Ella is going to say a few words on behalf of the state group that went, so Ella, come on over.
Hi, our StuCo would like to say a little something before you all leave. Me and seven others of our RJH StuCo had a wonderful chance to go to Missouri Association of Student Council State Convention in pop, uh, poplar bluff, with Ms. Thesson and Ms. Webster. While we were there having the time of our lives, a tornado stopped by. I don't think our group would have been okay without these two teachers saying it is going to be okay, which is why we would like to thank you both by giving you these T-shirts and a picture signed by all of us that went on the trip, so, thank you.
So, what does it say?
Where you at when they get there?
Oh, fun.
That's adorable. At the microphone.
At the microphone. I know, I'm sorry, they make me get there all the time.
Um, you don't want to talk? That's rude. First of all, I am really proud of this group of kids. That's all.
We know you work really hard with them, and we really appreciate everything you do with our kids.
We appreciate that. Congratulations. Thank you.
I'm thinking you're leaving.
I don't know where I'm going.
I'm, I promise, I got you.
Keep leading the way.
Good job.
Thank you, guys. All right.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
So sad, you don't want to stay.
You don't want to stay for the best part.
We might be a little offended.
All right. At this time, we will accept questions from the floor. Any person wishing to speak on question, ask any question previously discussed through administrative channels and not on the agenda will be granted three minutes to make a presentation to the Board. Please state your name for the record. Any person wishing to speak on any items on the agenda will be granted three minutes to make a presentation, please state your name for the record. Seeing no one, we will adjourn.
Nope.
No? I do the election results first, okay. Hold on. Okay. All right, the Board of Education had two three-year positions for Director. An election was held April 8th, 2025. The results for Director are presented for acceptance by the Board. A motion was made.
I'll make a motion to accept the election results as presented.
I'll second that, ooh, sorry. All in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Now I'm adjourning. Don't need a motion?
Yes.
I know we adjourned.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. All right, we are adjourned.
Okay, so, the purpose of the adjournment is to reorganize the Board. I would like to take just a moment, personal privilege, to thank- I would like to take just a moment, personal privilege, to thank Jessica Barron for her service to our students and community. Jessica was unable to be with us this evening, but we do have a plaque that we will get to her and thank her personally for her service, and we appreciate that. And of course, we want to welcome Mr. Marty as well. But we will start with the oath of office. So, Mr. Packard and Mr. Marty, if you'll come up, and Amy is going to administer that. We're gonna have you guys stand front and center, facing Gina here.
Okay, if you will raise your red hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jim Packard.
Aye, Larry Marty.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of school director.
Discharge the duties of school director.
In the Rolla School District.
In the Rolla School District.
To the best of my ability according to law.
To the best of my ability according to law.
That's it?
Can you see it?
Yes. This way?
We have to break that up.
Alright, congratulations to Mr. Packard and Mr. Marty. Thank you for being willing to serve. We appreciate your volunteering for these, this process. Appreciate that. At this time, we will start the process to elect new officers for the Board. So, I will open the floor up for nominations for President.
I'd like to nominate Carla Clayton.
Okay, we have a nomination for Carla Clayton. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I will close nominations. All those in favor of Carla Clayton for President, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Alright, congratulations Carla. Welcome to the presidency. And at this time then, I will also open the floor up for nominations for President-elect.
I'll nominate Jim Packard. I'll second that.
Okay, nomination for Jim Packard. Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, I will close those nominations. All those in favor of Jim Packard for President-elect, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Alright, congratulations, Mr. Packard.
Thank you.
And at this time, it is my pleasure to turn this over to Ms. Clayton.
Let me get out of the way, I'm sorry.
Chairs everywhere.
Musical chairs and dancers.
That's right. Larry, pull your microphone down just a bit. There you go, perfect.
It's first time.
I know, I know.
It's so confusing. There's so much to do. I can't even sign in.
Amy will fix it for you.
Don't close it.
Don't close it, Tom. I can't remember my email.
I couldn't carry it.
If that's helpful, that'll get you to the.
Thank you, Dr. Derek.
I don't think they will. I think they're smarter than that. Don't look anything like.
And you will need to call me back to order.
Is everybody ready to go back into open session? Can I get a motion to go into open session?
I make a motion to go into open session?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Anybody opposed? Alright, so our next item of duty is to make a motion to appoint a treasurer. Do I hear anybody who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to nominate Charlotte for treasurer.
Any other nominations? Alright, seeing none. Can I get a motion then to appoint Charlotte as treasurer?
I move we appoint Charlotte as treasurer.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Alright. Great, that motion carries. Our next item then is to look at the committees that we have.
Yeah, we need to do secretary, so.
Oh, secretary. Oh, okay, I see, thank you.
You need a motion to appoint Amy.
I'll make a motion to appoint Amy Looper as our Board Secretary for another year.
I second that motion.
Alright, all in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed, same sign? Alright, you're still in. Awesome, okay, now we're ready to move on to our special committees that we have. So, it looks like listed here, we have the A-plus Schools Committee, and Suya Daly was on that in the past.
We never met, so.
Would you like to keep that, or anybody else?
Somebody else.
Somebody else?
Yes.
What was it?
A-plus.
A-plus Schools Committee.
A-plus Schools.
They only meet if there's an appeal.
Okay, alright, so Mark Sells. Alright, Core Board, last time was Charlotte Jamison. Alright, so Suya Daly. Is it okay that I'm doing them all in one list? Okay, thank you. Okay, Crisis Management Team, that looks like that's the Board President, so that would be myself. And President-elect, that'd be Jim.
So, I'm on there also, so somebody could be, have a spot there.
Alright, who would like to join the Crisis Management Team? Anybody?
I'll join. I don't, can I? I'm new.
Yeah, you sure can do, you gotta join. Alright. Larry. Perfect. Okay, our next one is the ESSA Title Foster Care and Homeless Liaison. Is that Dr. Welch? So we'll keep you there.
We'll continue.
Perfect. Then we have the Audit Committee, which we had Tracy Jenkins, Carla Clayton, and Jessica Barron, so we need three individuals.
Oh, we've joined there.
Alright, so Jim.
I think you were on it, Carla, because you were treasurer.
Typically the treasurer.
Probably, so that'd be Charlotte. And then who else would like to join? We need a third person for the Audit Committee. Anybody?
I'll do it.
Who wants to? Alright. Alright, next we have the MSBA Delegate and Alternate, which is usually the Board President, President-elect. So that'd be you and Jim and me. Alright, and then we have a Policy Committee. Last time it was Charlotte Jamison and Mark Sells.
I would like to stay on it, if that's okay. And then usually we ask our newest Board members to be on the Policy Committee as well.
I was just gonna ask.
It's a great way to learn.
It's a great way to learn all the policies.
It is.
There's a couple of them.
Great opportunity. Alright, then we have the Residency Waiver Committee, so Dr. Welch will continue to be on that.
I'll stay with that.
Sue, and you? Okay, we'll keep that the same. And then we have the Calendar Committee, and that was Mark and Jessica.
I'll do Calendar Committee.
I would stay on that.
You want to stay on that one, Mark? So we'll have Tracy and Mark. And then we have the Student Representative Committee, which last time was myself. Would anyone else like to do that? Larry, you want to try that?
Yeah, I'm happy to, yeah.
Okay, that's a great experience as well.
It's Maria. Maria, this is Larry.
Alright, so there is our committee. Did you get all that, Amy? Were you able to get all that list? Perfect. Okay, moving on then to our.
We need to accept that.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Can I get a motion then to accept our Exo-Facto Committee appointments?
I'll make a motion. I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, anybody opposed? Alright, now we're looking at building assignments. So, we are gonna draw, if you have already been at this building, draw again.
Okay, thanks.
Because I think we're trying to mix it up a little bit, because some of us are getting the same one, so, alright, we'll just. Just get up and, there goes Sue.
Lowering on it.
Keeps dropping, yeah.
High school.
Sue was high school.
Rolla Junior High. I have had Rolla Junior High.
You probably get a lot of insight from the junior high.
Oh, yeah. Truman Elementary, yes.
See if I get any ones, I don't.
Nothing.
I had that this year. I want to redraw it. My favorite, I mean, not really my favorite, they're all my favorite, but they're all my favorite. But.
So was that Jim, RTI? Was that RTI?
You got the middle school.
Wonderful.
You gotta leave me one.
That's the one I just had.
Okay, we'll switch then.
Okay.
What did Coach get?
Perfect.
Mark Twain?
Mark Twain.
Rolla Junior High. Awesome.
Alright, so, we don't need to make a motion for those, right?
No, not for those.
Okay, and. Okay, moving on now to our Consent Agenda. A consent agenda is utilized by the Board, Rolla Board of Education, as a means of dealing with routine matters, which must be considered by the Board of Education but require a minimum of discussion. All Board of Education members receive and review written information supporting the items listed on the Consent Agenda well in advance of the meeting. While any Board of Education member is welcome to remove any item from the Consent Agenda for separate consideration or discussion for any reason. Normally, all items on the Consent Agenda are approved in one motion with a minimum of discussion.
We do need to call one thing out, Ms. Clayton, if that's okay.
Yes, please.
Dr. Fulton, do you want to talk through the roofing?
I do, and I also want to call in another one too.
Okay.
So, first of all, we'll just go with number four, MOU with Green Tree. That is due to our move because of the tornado damage. So I just wanted you to understand that that comes with the tornado damage and that is part of the agreement that we have with them to use the rooms for preschool over there. Number eight is blackjack roofing. So with that, we have sustained damage to this building. The green trim to the parapet and the drip, drip pan, drip.
Drip edge.
Drip edge, thank you. I'm getting there. It's all, it's all new language, I'm getting there. Drip edge was damaged in the storm. If we replace it, we cannot match the green color. So we're going to have to go with gray, so we have approval from the insurance company to replace the part that was damaged, but it's going to look very awkward with, you know, gray and then everything else being green. So this is actually due to some storm damage, but is on the district. We would like to note that that is for the, to replace this and get this damage replaced as soon as possible, but also make our building match and not look like, you know, weird all the way through town.
And the insurance wouldn't cover that because of the continuous nature of it?
They only cover, we have replacement damage. It's not for betterment. So they would, they are authorized $31,000 or $32,000 just for the damaged portion.
And then the remainder would be on the.
Remainder is on us.
Any other items?
Nope.
Nope, alright. Then can I get a motion to accept the Consent Agenda A through E?
I move that we accept the Consent Agenda A through E as presented.
I second that.
Alright, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Mrs. Clayton, I'm abstaining on that vote, please.
Alright, moving on now to old business. We have Dr. Fulton to present to us an update on the long-arranged facility plan.
You get me for the next one.
I see that. A little busy tonight.
I have four of these this evening, so. Would like to update you on our, all of our 2020 and 2023 projects that we have had going moving forward, so. Would like to remind you, this is the rendering of the auditorium, and I hope for what you're going to see in a few minutes will please you, so the FRL panels are in. They have some blue on them, so don't freak out. It's being held up there, but, here we go. Gina takes a better picture of the curtains than what Monica does, so note that you are seeing the curtains in a better light. Also note that in there in the bottom, that is the items being there for Chicago. Chicago will be held in the auditorium, May 9 and May 10. So very excited about that. I have to get the lights commissioned, but there. So, very exciting as we move forward. Notice the brown around the proscenium, around the stage. But there it is. The FRL panels are in and installed. If you got a little closer, you'd see some blue tape holding them up there, but that's to hold the glue up and for them to set. It's very, very impressive. Just as another view for you, just coming from the stage out, Gina went and took pictures, so really appreciate that. Her pictures are much better than my phone's pictures. And look at the entryway, so this is in what used to be the alley off of 10th Street, looking into the auditorium. That was drywall last time you saw it, so look at how different that looks. And again, you can see the blue tape here where it is holding up because those FRL panels were glued in. So it just looks so different. Really excited about that. What's left to do? Well, completionist and trim pieces in the hallway and commissioning the lighting. So there is a, four pieces that need to be ordered that are, that we've asked them to do so we can get all of our lighting to work. There has been a, one, our lighting, lights in the auditorium are overriding in some relays because they're wireless, some of the lighting in the commissioning, so they have ordered those pieces. I've told them today, again, we have to have this, Chicago's going on and we've got to have the lights and all that working, so. KNS has assured me that that is going on.
And all that jazz?
And all that jazz. All that jazz, jazz hands, right? And then Honer will be here tomorrow for the final punch list, so it is, it's exciting times that we are finally here. Would like to update you on our Phelps County Community Education Foundation Early Childhood Center. So, planning is moving forward, aka PCCF ECC, just for you. I'm probably end up going with ECC, Early Childhood Center, soon, but we met with Honer and Associates on Monday, and then we are meeting with the early childhood staff again to receive input on a preliminary set of drawings that we are working on with them. So, planning is moving forward, all exciting times. We have been talking to you a lot about, over the last few months, over the athletic field updates. Received last bit of information this morning. As you know, we are going to have to replace the turf at the football field and to fix the damage that is coming down on the edge of the bleachers on that wall and that retaining wall that is there. So as of right now, they're working on the RFP right now. First proposed date, or the proposed date that we issue it will be mid-July. With work not starting until November, that's because we have to get through football season, and then the estimated completion date of April of 2026, so keep watching. I will give more information as we move forward. Just as a reminder that we completed all of our district-wide lighting upgrades. We took all of our lights inside and out and moved them to LED. That was completed in January of 2025. It was completed on time and within budget. Security film is the one, is the film that we put on the windows for, it is not ballistic film, but it does delay any intruder coming in. All of that was completed at the end of February 2025. I will point out in some of the presentations later, it did its job, especially when we had some window damage at Mark Twain. It did its job. We did it for the purpose of, you know, thinking of an intruder, but when things fell on our windows, those pieces that were above eight foot, because we only went eight foot and below, above eight foot actually broke out, everything down below, it held it in place. So, we may come back to you and ask to play, I'll get a quote, I would probably like to go all the way up with it at some point. In the case of a storm, if kids were in our building, it would be a good idea, so I'll be coming back to you with some recommendations before long. HVAC upgrades, if you remember, it was completed in August of 2024, on time and within budget. That has all changed, just saying, thanks to the tornado, we'll talk about that in a little bit. We also put a brand-new chiller in with a 2023 bond at Mark Twain. It sustained a bit of damage, it's, we're working on it though. And then there we were. And then they replaced two, two units here on our building as well, installed in, in November of 2024. Still moving forward with all of that. Questions about the long-range facility update? Okay.
All right, moving on now to the storm recovery update.
And I'm going to apologize in advance, this one is quite long, but I, last time we updated you in our meeting, it was just right after the tornado. And it real, we really didn't have a lot of power, we didn't have a lot of time to prepare things for you. So we're going to go back a little bit and look at some pictures and just talk about really what happened and, you know, where we've been and where we're going. Because until I did this, I told Dr. Dare, I didn't realize we've made enough, a lot of progress. But I am also going to say that in that Rolla Schools has a fabulous team. This could not have been done alone. By the time you add in our fabulous staff, our custodial staff, our maintenance staff, our teachers, they are the ones that pitched in and made all of this work happen and come to fruition. And on top of that, our community, they stepped up really big. We're going to come back and ask for their help again this summer because we have to get teachers back to some rooms and some buildings. But just know that without them, we could not have done what we have, what we did. And all of the, the plans that we can sit and dream up and in the dark some days. I mean, literally, it was just dark in the room when we were sitting there planning. So as with that, we're going to talk about the disco, about our recovery plan. So the properties that were impacted by the tornado, Mark Twain, Wyman Middle School, the softball, softball complex, and our track, one piece of the track, Rolla Technical Center, transportation and maintenance. What did we do? Well, Dr. Dare was at the middle school when the tornado hit. What did we do on Saturday? He was, he responded to every building that night. And I know, and I know Dr. Welch did too. I was out of town, and I was talking to them on the phone, driving home, with my granddaughter eating all the sugar in the world. My son didn't appreciate it by the time I got back to Waynesville that night. Kind of a little bit of fun, a little bit of paybacks there. We, I mean, we met Saturday morning, and we toured all of the sites. And we looked at everything, we took pictures. We met and we created a plan. I'm sure that wasn't the plan we come up with in the end, but we got some really good ideas. We contacted our music, our insurance company, as well as the architects and structural engineers. After touring the buildings, we knew we needed them, and they were so gracious to meet us on Sunday. We had three, four structural engineers show up. We had three from Archer Elgin and one from Honer and Associates, as well as our architect, Melissa at that point, and Mark, he was, he was out of town, but he was contacting us as well. We toured all of the sites. They were there to assure and tell us what we needed to know. Could we have school, could we not have school, what things were safe and not safe, to help us create a plan. And this response has been ongoing. Questions so far? Okay. I did not know we could have so many consultants, but I think we have consultants for our consultants. So let me start with this. Music is the Missouri, Missouri United School Insurance Consortium. That is our insurance company that we deal with. They also work with Gallagher Basset. So with that, we have an adjuster. And Shane and I are becoming very, very close. We talk a lot these days, and so does, so does Kendra. With that, we hired a mitigation team, which was first onsite. That was recommended by our insurance company to use. They were very good. And in order for us to get reinsurance, we have consultants on roofing, HVAC, a building consultant, literally looking at the structural, structure of our buildings, as well as JS Held, who deals with everything but roofing. So I deal with all of them almost daily as well. So we have consultants for our consultants. I'm going to start off tonight with Mark Twain Elementary. I know many of you have seen this picture and saw it on social media. That was the cafeteria. When the tornado came through, it ripped the top off, and those pictures are the inside of the cafeteria at that time. And while many people think because of this damage, this was our worst-hit buildings, it was not. It was just this corner of the building. So if you look in the, in the back, right in here where I'm pointing the pointer, that is the stage area. And so that area also held two classrooms. This area is our stage. And we did lose those two classrooms of items, unsafe to get in there. And then when I talk about the windows, you can see here, we have one that our maintenance team boarded up. All of these windows right here held. That was with the window film. All of these above did not, those are the ones that broke out, but these are here. This damage is from trampolines, if I remember correctly, right, Dr. Dare?
Yep.
You picked up 27 trampoline springs and?
I don't know, I have a little collection if anybody wants one.
You do? Everywhere we went, there was a trampoline spring, but that's where, that's where the damage came from. So this is inside one of the classrooms where they had boarded up the window at that time. That is just a little bit of what Mark Twain looked like. In those windows, in those rooms where the windows broke, there was glass everywhere. Thankful to our team, but as well as first onsite, who came in and helped clean up. Our staff did as well. They wiped everything down, they cleaned everything. It looked like a school by the time we got ready to go. This is the section of roof that was damaged. If you look at the big section in all red and this part, this is the part of the building that we lost because we tore down the cafeteria and the kitchen and the custodial area right in there. All of that is now demolished. This part here is of the roofing that we are going back and repairing. Not structurally, it's not hurting anything structurally. We just had a little, had a little bit to fix in there. Waiting on that quote to come in. We're waiting on an, I'll explain, we're waiting on IR scan. Okay, so of the damage, we had eight classrooms with window damage, three need the windows entirely replaced. We lost the cafeteria, the kitchen, the custodial office and the stage area, including our kitchen equipment. We had some roof damage. That chiller, I told you, was brand-new, has not even been hooked up yet. It sustained a couple bricks. In the area that it hit, which was on the compressors, luckily, it was insulated with a, some type of a, of a covering, and it protected it, so we are actually able to use that right now. Has been cleared for us to use. We did lose all of our breakfast and lunch food for the week. That's what we keep in our freezers because of the power being out, and as well as some fence damage. Not a lot there. How have we responded? As well as our staff responding and cleaning. And I think you saw a picture of Dr. Dare cleaning, that was at Mark Twain, by the way. And I would like to say thanks to him and Kendra and Mandy and Kendra's husband. We were all there cleaning that morning, waiting on everybody to show up because we didn't know what else to do. We were just, we needed to be busy. So it was a team effort. We did hire the mitigation team who came in and cleaned up the grounds, as well as all of our community members that came in, came in and cleaned up the grounds. That team from the mitigation team was trained in what to pick up and what to look for. They went above and beyond. We also brought in desiccant air, so that is a, a fancy dehumidifier that was running through the building, as well as HEPA-filtered air. So we had big HEPA-filter machines running in the hallways as well. We boarded up the windows and they insulated them and put drywall, and they're very well decorated if you haven't been to Mark Twain, in 201, 203 and 205. And then maintenance replaced the broken window pieces in the other rooms as well. The chiller was inspected, and we were able to continue installation. They are still doing that as we speak. We did relocate two classrooms that were on the stage in title and one special education classroom because that was right off of that caf, off of that kitchen area, off of that cafeteria area. Plans are underway for the window replacement in the summer of 2025. I do have some quotes coming in, but we're also going to go back and look at if we replace some windows. Those were 1956 windows. So we're going to look at the possibility of upgrading those. We have to, we can't replace with 1955 items. So we're going to look at that, just keep in watching for more information with that as we move forward. Working with Honer and Associates on that as well. We are working with the adjuster regarding the rebuilding of the cafeteria and working on planning already with Honer and Associates. I would like to point out the timeline for replacement of that cafeteria, could be 18 to 24 months. Grayco is our roofing consultant, so you will see Grayco Roofing evaluations all the way through this. They are, they are very big to make sure that, not only for reinsurance, but we're putting in the right materials. They did an IR scan, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the IR scan, they have to, they have to come in and wait for a very dry day and bring in, and they scan the roof for any wet materials up there. So we're waiting on that report to come back. Yes, and so we're waiting on that report. They did that last week. We are waiting on a fencing quote. And just so you know, our students are still receiving their regular lunch. Kristy Kraft, our food service director, and her staff has, went above and beyond in cleaning things up and being prepared. We are cooking our food in other kitchens, and we transport it in, and I know there are going to be certain bags, but we got the bags to keep all the food at temperature, and it is served in the steam table. The gym cafeteria at the, at Mark Twain now, they just call it the Cafe Gym or Gym Cafe, so. But our kids are eating lunch there. They, we put tables down, where they've rearranged their schedule for specials. They are making it work. They have, that staff has gone above and beyond. Yes?
We're also building a new kitchen almost in the.
Yes, cafeteria and kitchen, all of that involved in one. It'll all be there together. It's an exciting time for that, okay. Wyman. As you will see at Wyman, this is the front of the building, and that was taking that, taken that morning. As you noticed, the roof sustained the biggest amount of damage there. Notice that all of the soffit edges are gone there. This is the inside of Wyman School. When we, we really thought, just like everybody else, that Mark Twain might be our problem, we were prepared to move them, and then we walked into, into Wyman School. Very shocked by what we saw and what was there. This is another view of the hallways. And though, we have not, this is all one, wherever we walk in, pictures of the down tile, of the wet that has come through. And this was what one of the classrooms looked like. I would give kudos to the custodial crew from Wyman. They came in even before we brought in our mitigation team and had a lot of this cleaned up in advance of us bringing our teachers back to come in and help with this move. They did an amazing job. Outside of Wyman, this is on the back side. The yellow pipe here, and here is our gas line. It rolled off the building with the force of the tornado. It also laid all of the membrane back there, and it rolled a lot of it up like a burrito and collected it right here. A few pictures from on top. You know, you know I climb on roofs, I took some pictures up there. We had Mandy up there with us, it was great. She was a trooper, she went with us, and we were all on those roofs together. I'm like, see the fun I get to have? So as you see, as it rolled and took out a lot of the layers of all of the roofing, all the way down to the tectum, which is a spaghetti-like material in the ceiling. See, I'm learning, it looks like spaghetti up there. It is an insulation.
That's the roof deck.
That is the roof deck. It took it. At one point, we are going to have to go back with some metal decking in this, in this building as well. So we again are waiting on that IR scan to come back in. If you look right here, it pulled the expansion joint up, out of the, out of the roofing as well. If you look back here, it's a little hard to see, but this is the, that fence is damaged as well as all the debris on the playground in the back. Grayco gave us this, gave us this after their roof analysis. This is the piece that was immediately temporaried in, all of this right here. It's amazing what can happen in about 24 hours before the next rain comes in, but all of this section of the roof, so you're looking at the second-grade wing, the cafeteria and the kitchen area will have to go out to bid to be replaced as well. Right now, we have, we're, we are getting approval to start work on this very, very soon. So damaged 20 classrooms with water damage affecting ceilings, floor tile lighting and casework. Casework will be all of the wood items in the room. Two storage and workroom areas, two sheds outside the playgrounds, ECSE and K3 playground, fencing around the playground, and I'm saying approximately 80% of that roof. The gas line, and that gas line runs from one end to the other, it has to run the kitchen, as well as the loss of breakfast and lunch food items for the week. Recovery efforts there, again, shout out to Bill and the custodial crew from Wyman and their work. I will also like to point out that our interim principal, Mrs. Hayes, and our new principal, Mrs. Heflin, were both on site that night of the tornado, and they have, they have been there and been a great help as well. So again, we've had mitigation with a temporary roof. That, that mitigation company came in, they ran the desiccant air, the HEPA-filter, they wiped everything down, they removed all of the damaged casework, lighting, flooring. Now, whenever I say lighting and all of these, in this incident, incident, all of our brand-new lights took on water, they are going to have to be replaced in those certain rooms as well. They will be replaced with light fixtures, just like that. Again, our roof is analyzed by Grayco, which we have that initial report, but we did request the IR scan, waiting on that report. And so we will receive finalized quotes for roofing replacement based on that IR report as we move forward. Bids will be taken for what I'm calling that northwest wing, which is the second-grade wing and the cafeteria roof and kitchen. And we are, we do have a quote for restoring those classroom areas and that casework. Waiting on approval from the company to do that, and fencing quotes have been requested. The fencing company hasn't had time to get with us yet, so you're going to see that over and over. Questions about Wyman?
And roofing in general? Have they said anything about requiring fireproof material between decking and?
Yes, so instead of, one, I know we're going with what they call a poly ISO. I can't remember that entire, but we're going to, they are requiring us to go with a poly ISO, which is more fire, which is that fire layer that goes in between.
No, it's usually something in between.
Yeah. It includes, yeah, they've got that in that.
It's in that poly, in that poly ISO.
Yeah.
It's on top of the decking between it and the poly ISO.
Correct. Yes.
Did they have to take the fencing down behind Wyman, or is it?
We have not.
Some of it was taken down for us.
Yeah.
What, what is the idea for Wyman's timeframe? Were we thinking that our kids will be able to be back in the school in August?
We are. Again, we are also planning backwards, so we're going with the date, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. This is our, this is our date, and we're working backwards with all of those things.
That's been a question.
Absolutely. That is, right now, that is our plan to be back there. So once the roof gets on, and that's just a couple of progress, then we should be able to move forward with the rest of the things. Rolla Middle School. The picture on the left is hard to see, but we had no power. So if, what you do see up top is the wet ceiling tiles in the hallway. There's also water in the hall, and this is one of the classrooms. This part over here is standing water in that as well. We're just going to go straight to the roof because here, 17 units, 18 were damaged. The entire gas line was compromised, but 17 units were removed from the roof. And so they left three-by-three skylights, so everywhere that you see this, there was an air conditioning unit. It tossed them, it rolled the membrane, membrane back. Again, the yellow line up there is the gas line as well. I would like to point out, that is a large group of air conditioning units. This unit.
We waited on those.
Oh, my gosh, I know.
Correct, and to order them is a 12-week lead time, and they are not arguing with us. It is 12 weeks for us to get them in, so it will be fast and furious. We have asked that they be ordered, they came, just came, and the consultants were here yesterday to do a, the last look at them as well. They were finally up on the roof with our HVACI company. Going back to this unit right here, you can't see it very well, but this gas line was not broke off. And correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Dare, but that gas line right there was still intact. This, all of the wiring is with it. It unscrewed from that gas line right there. Just a weird anomaly, just thought I would point that out. This is not indicative of all of the units on the top, but again, the section of the roof that is under construction as we speak is right here. We've already received approval, and they have begun construction, doing this part right here. We did lose two of the three units on the auditorium, as well as several down here at sixth grade and over the kitchen and the music room area. So 11 classrooms with water damage, ceilings, lights, casework, tile flooring. 17 units were destroyed, damaged. One is damaged, it was still on the roof, it is in a connection, it should be usable. The natural gas line was impaired over the entire building, it, thanks to Patrick, and they immediately got it repaired so we could cook food there again. So, but that will have to be redone this summer. Again, the roof damage in the auditorium, it was just the stage dressing room area, the girls' area that was damaged. We pulled that ceiling out of there. We did lose all of our breakfast and lunch food for the week there as well. Recovery efforts, Mrs. Davis went above and beyond in getting people in there and getting things cleaned up and helping assess the damage, as well as her custodial crew. The fifth grade area, because that section that was there, we decided to move the entire fifth grade out. They are in this building. There are two classrooms in this room right now whenever we're not here. So they have done a great job. So they have done a great job getting over here. Again, temporary roof, removal of the water damaged islands, ceiling tiles, lighting, floor, casework. Cleaning of the items in that area, even the things that were left in there, they, the mitigation company came in and wiped off and cleaned. We ran the desk and air. We ran HEPA filter air. Since then, we've had, so we've had rain, so they come back and they rerun all of the heaters and they keep movers. They have also given us temporary AC installed. We have temporary units sitting in the middle of the hallway because that very back hallway lost all of their units to run that. They, they were very worried the kids were going to touch it. They've done a great job, so we're very pleased by that. Again, Graco analyzed our roof. Um, that work, that roofing quote was done thanks to Patrick's quick work and it has been approved and that one is underway and should be done in two weeks.
Question for you on that. With all the units that are not on the roof, how about your controls for the building? Your building HVAC controls?
Correct. We have a quote for that work as well and we've sent that off. I haven't heard anything, so we're waiting on that piece as well. EPM is going to have quite a bit of work to, um, get all those up and running again.
So on middle school, same as Wyman, my first question that I get when I'm out somewhere is about Wyman. And then my second question is middle school. Is, are you thinking that all of our classes will be able to be back at middle school?
Once that roof is on, then we can move forward with, with everything else and that roof will be on in two weeks. Gives us a bit of a lead time. I will say it is 12 weekly time on those HVAC units. Um, Patrick has done a great job getting in touch with the company that we purchased them for. They have actually been here as well, as well as Butzer. And again, the last report from our consultants is due in. I'll probably get it by Monday.
And let me clarify there. We are not planning on moving anybody back this school year.
Right. And that's coming up.
Disruption. We're going to stay where we are and finish the year. But we do anticipate being back in Wyman and middle school for August.
August. And that's all coming up here in our working backwards plan. Softball and track complex. So that is the softball press box, concession stand, bathrooms on the left, on the right. That little box right there is our sound system. We did salvage the controls for the lights. Um, the lighting company from Musco is going to be coming in to analyze the lighting for the softball field. We have to get them looked at as well. We, it bent the fence over. If you notice those poles, where's one pole, lone pole standing? Everything else is laid down. Those are bleachers. Those are bleachers. There are bleachers over here. It kind of wiped us out. So with that, we are working with the city to hold softball practice with them this coming fall. So that work is already underway as well. Again, fencing, bleachers, press box, concession stand. Um, the high jump pad was damaged at the track. That is the only thing that was damaged there. I have a quote for that. We'll get that ordered. In the meantime, things are still progressing there, so.
And they're still able to do practices there for track season?
Absolutely. Yes, our track is, they said was fine. Transportation and maintenance. I'd like to do a shout out to, um, to Hank Harper and Leo Clark, our transportation director. So when all of this happened that night, I called Hank and sent him up looking to see how bad our buses were hit. I knew if the middle school was hit. We actually got pretty lucky there with that, but I will tell you that this is some of the fencing in the back. Those are our band trailers. Um, you can see that the fencing in that area took a big hit. There are the band trailers again. I'm waiting on the final report, but I don't think it's going to be great there. This picture right here is where whenever those power poles bent over and it pulled our power from the building. Thank you to RMU and to, um, Justin, who is our electrician that works for our maintenance department. They got this up and running finally, so. And thanks to Leo and Hank for being our shoppers and I knew, I knew better than to give lots of people credit cards, so I just gave it to one person and two people and sent them out for all of the things that we needed immediately. They helped us with our move. They did a great job. So there are transportation building. The roof had minor damage. The electrical though was the biggest part. Bay door was damaged. It has since been replaced. Fence damage, bus damage. This is the miraculous part. One windshield and one back window. That's it. And so, um, our bus mechanics actually kept working without power over there and kept going. They had, and we're bringing them in next month, but they had 100% inspection rate on the buses for the week after this. They did a great job. They, they worked miracles. Maintenance, we have, um, two buildings out back that both of them need their roofs replaced. We already have quotes and that work will start soon. It has been approved. Electrical issues, Justin has taken care of that. The tree damage, fence damage. The vehicles, the band box truck, the band trailer and the maintenance trailer are probably total losses. So we're waiting on that report to come in. RTC, which we've talked a little bit about this building, the parapet and the drip edge, because we talked about that a few minutes ago. Other damage across the district, RTI had food damage due to the loss of electricity and culinary arts supermarket careers, FFA, with minimal roof damage. Junior high, high school in Truman, no notable damage. Personal items, so everyone asks, you know, what about the teachers' personal items? Our insurance will cover up to $1,000 of reimbursement, but that item must be pertinent to the position they hold in the district. And the employee has to purchase those items and turn in the receipt. Am I correct? But I want to say thank you to the core and our community members who have graciously donated to help teachers replace our personal items, not covered by insurance. So that process is in, in place as well. Our community and our core, core board have done an amazing job with that. How are we?
I'm sorry. Do you know what's going to happen with Wyman PTO supplies?
Have no idea yet, but we'll get there. We'll figure it out. It's on our list of inventories. Every, and just so you know, I have to go through all the inventory sheets. Every teacher has one. So give me time. We're, we're getting there. So we're still collecting things and going through. We are going to plan with the end in mind. I say August 4th. We like it, but before then. But August 4th is when most of our support staff returns for the nine-month positions, our secretaries. Although our principals will be there the whole time. We are planning to move the fifth grade and all of Wyman back to their buildings sometime over the summer. Not before school's out. But we are going to actually need more help from our community at that point to, that was a well-fined oil machine to get them there. I need that same response coming back. I couldn't believe it when she called and said, we're moved and we're like, where? And it was done and it was great. And so that was amazing. Cause while Dr. Dare and Mandy took care of those pieces, Dr. Welch, I was meeting with the adjusters and doing all those background pieces. And then I meet with the adjuster weekly or on an on-call basis and so does Kendra. I meet with all of the consultants a lot. And so, um, and we have administrative team. We have regular meetings. You know, all of us, as far as just administrative team, we meet regularly and continue with those plans. So we will continue to update you. I'm sorry this was so long, but we needed to go all the way back to where we were, to where we are now. And again, it was because of this great staff and this great team that we have made the progress we made. And I just want to say thank you to everyone for their work and their efforts in that. And I'll be honest, I know he doesn't want to hear it, but the mind of Dr. Dare is amazing. And so watching him work and put things together and I know he has experience, but I'm, I, I was swimming going, oh, okay. All right, here we go. Never made so many spur of the moment decisions that were tied to a lot of money, but I did. I called him one time. I'm like, I have to approve this. It's a lot of money.
Well, Dr. Dare, Dr. Welch, Dr. Fulton, all three of you guys just really stepped up and I, I loved watching, not just how your mind works, but, um, but how you trusted the rest of the admin team as well. You know, the Josh Smiths and the Don Lunas of the, of the district. There's lots of people we could mention.
Absolutely.
Who just took, you took the little bit that you gave them and ran with it and made it happen. So, uh, you, you have put together an amazing team and you guys have been amazing leaders of that team. Thank you.
Watching them all load everything up at Wyman that morning was just like, it was Sergeant Snicker.
We had video of that.
You should have had video. It should have been like a time lapse video because it was like they were yelling for a teacher to come to this room and like two seconds later, everything in the room would be gone. And they were just marching and moving everything out. Just stays here, goes to the basement. Where's it go? How do I get to the basement? I was like, oh my gosh, this is crazy. But it, it was fast and it worked.
It worked. I will tell you, I'm thankful for Dr. Welch because she's the only one that had a little bit of power and the internet. So we had, that was our office and that was where we had, that's where we commanded at. And she fed us. That's right. I mean, her husband went out and got us, got, got the pizza, got the food, made sure we had what we needed. Cause neither one of us had any power. So I just want to say thank you to everyone and thank you for your support as well.
Would like to offer, um, I know we took the board on a tour, um, somewhere in there, uh, one of those days. Uh, but if any of you would like to go through now, um, and see, um, the cleaned up damage. I guess, uh, before they get in there, uh, we're very willing to do that. We can propose some dates to you and, and get that set up if you're interested. I see some heads shaking.
Is there still any, any areas like at the middle school or Wyman that still needs trees and stuff cleaned up and debris? Or is it all pretty?
The ditch area is still pretty gross.
There is.
Just, just all the way back into that back area is still. There's some at Wyman. The back end of Wyman still has some stuff and, but even here across the street, there's still some stuff.
I was curious about that.
In the Mark Twain, um, outdoor classroom too. So yeah, there's still a little bit of that.
And we can get with Patrick to find out exactly where those are because we're going to have to work on that most of the summer. So yes.
Well, I know there's a lot of people that were volunteering and helping with that, so. Carla, we found way down off of the hill at Wyman. Our totes from the Christmas stuff with the little Christmas signs and where to go, enter through here. Our handwriting on everything. Yeah. I mean, like way, I didn't even know it was still our property. Way down there.
I found some custodial supplies out there too, so.
And part of the roof was way down there.
It was way down there. Absolutely. Okay. Any questions in regards to what we're undergoing and where, where we're going? We will continue to update you every few weeks about the progress we've made and going from there. I did tell Dr. Dare today that, wow, we have done a lot in, you know, 33 days, so.
It's amazing.
Sometimes you don't think about that till you sit down and, and go through all of that. It's like, oh my. But I would also like to shout out to, you know, to everyone again, thank you for our entire community and our staff. They did the work.
We are very blessed.
We have a great, great community.
We do. We really do. Okay. Is it my turn again? Okay. Can I not share it with you? Oh my goodness. Okay. So I'll just talk about it real quick. That's fine. Um, climate and culture, the survey went live this week. Little bit after what we were planning, because we were planning right before spring break and then there was a tornado. Um, so we, Gina has so kindly, um, sent all of the survey information out. The staff will take it on next Monday during their PD day. It will be open through May, hold on, I have it here. May 16th. And, um, we have added a K3 link, as I told you before. It is awesome because in that link, the K3 kids, there are eight questions. All of them are tied to themes, but in the eight questions, they have the same Liker scale, but they have happy faces to answer with and little faces, so. Again, I would like to point out that this survey is confidential, not anonymous. It is being housed and ran for us. All the data collection is through Qualtrics. And so staff may balk, but they do have to log in with their email and that gets them to the right survey. We do not see who answered what questions. I do not have access to that information at all. So, um, there is one question on the student link, asking them to talk about their favorite teacher as a positive. That information will come back to us in a spreadsheet with no names on it whatsoever. We will not know who does what. But we will be sharing that information back with those teachers whenever we get it.
Has somebody gone out to some?
Has?
Okay. Cause I got a, a parent ask. One of the questions was asking about their school building. And one was a Mark Twain student and their other student was a Wyman student.
It was.
They were like, we're not really sure how to answer that question right now, but for the most part, we really love it.
Okay, that's good. That's good. I, I appreciate that. So, um, we did take some of those questions as we talked about and we, instead of 48 questions for the staff, I think they have like 24. It will not take them 35 minutes. It will take them 10 to 15 at the most. Every question is under a theme. You will get the data back in a data dashboard that will go live and public. Um, as soon as we get everything back and they do all of their magic at Qualtrics and we will be sharing that with everyone involved and the team as well, so. Okay. Questions about that? I'm done for now.
Thank you, Dr. Fulton.
Thank you.
All right, moving on now to new business. We have Mrs. Atkinson to come talk to us about the 26th salary schedule.
I want to start this evening by kind of going over, just recapping, things that we have discussed in previous meetings that are salary and benefits related. So brief overview of the health insurance fund. Again, we are, have a self-funded plan, so we have a fund balance of $5.7 million as of March 31st. That, those funds are used to pay our claims. Okay, so it's a very healthy balance. We have experienced a decrease of just under $200,000 since October 1st. That was very planned. I actually think it would be more than that. Cause you remember two years ago, we decreased premiums by 10%. This year by 15%. So we still have a really healthy, uh, fund balance there. At this point, I am not anticipating making any changes to the premiums or the plan structures for, um, next year's plan. It's a, we're only about six months in, so we'll come to you again in July with an updated, some updated information and ask for your approval to, uh, to approve those premiums, so. To be continued on that, but I don't anticipate making any, any changes. And then, um, staff that you have previously approved and administrator, support staff, certified staff. I was noticing this evening, I'll have to revisit that on our list. I think there's more than one staff that we're not replacing because of classroom sizes, so I didn't capture that here. Also, this happened during, um, our work session that we had in January. But you approved us to go ahead and pay up to 40 hours of comp time for our 12-month support staff in August because we are restructuring our, our pay calendar so that we can start paying two weeks in arrears instead of one. So that is also going to be built into the budget for fiscal year 26. So all of those changes have already been approved. And, uh, right now it's a net of about $383,000. Okay, so moving on to new things. So certi- uh, certificated staff proposal for salaries for next year. Of course, we're proposing movement on the schedule for years of service. And then a 2% increase to the base. That would bring our base up to 41,706. It's currently at 40,888. That comes at a cost of about $864,000. If you look at our salary survey that Dr. Fulton and her staff have taken on, that's that survey that used to be called the Camdenton Salary Survey. It surveys about 25 school districts across the state, mostly in our area. And so we kind of look at our rankings there. We're currently ranked at number 19 for step one. This would bring us up to step, or to a ranking of number 14. However, keep in mind, of course, this is for current year data. All these other districts are also going to be changing their salary schedules, so. Uh, we'll, we'll know more how we, how we rank for next year in like what, January, something like that when we do that survey again. For support staff, we're also going to propose movement on the schedule, uh, for years of service and then a 2% increase to that base. Our schedule that is the lowest hourly rate is currently at 1556. That would bump that to 1587 per hour. And those are our food service workers and custodians and paraprofessionals. That cost is 483,500. I do want to point out the movement and, um, base increase averages about 3 and 1/4% pay increase. Again, that's average. Other things we're looking at or that we're proposing this evening is an increase to our substitute pay to $125 a day from 110. We are still short on substitute teachers, so we're hoping that this will, um, help us out there. Also increasing our long-term substitute pay to 147 a day. We're currently at 133 per day. And I want to clarify, that's for a substitute without a teaching certificate. It's already, if you have a teaching certificate and you've subbed for, uh, more than 10 consecutive days, you're paid at the base salary rate, that daily rate. So that will continue. Also, trip driver pay is currently $18 an hour and so we're proposing to increase that to $20 an hour. And those things combined for about $95,000. And then extra duty salary schedule. Uh, we are wanting to add a high school assistant boy soccer coach and an assistant speech and debate coach. Both of those are due to the numbers of participants in those activities. And then looking at the schedule, we're wanting to move the head softball and assistant softball coaches up one level. That would put them equal to where our baseball coaches are. Those are very comparable activities, so we've spoken with, uh, Mr. Caballero about that and he is in agreement. There's really no difference between participation, number of games and all that. So we're just making those more equitable. Those are very small ask. Those are a total of about $10,640 for, for those. So all told, the salary schedule proposals are about 1.4 million. So all told, the salary schedule proposals are about one point four million dollars. So going on to look at some revenue considerations for fiscal year twenty-six. So high-level foundation formula, and recap, that is our state foundation formula. That's about thirty-five percent or so of our total operating revenue. The figures that you'll see on the next slide are budgeting at a flat state adequacy target of six thousand, seven sixty. Even though it's supposed to be increased to seventy-one, forty-five, I am cautiously optimistic we're gonna get there. There's been some, some talk at the legislative level about putting that funding back in. We'll see what the governor approves. If it is put back in and we're fully funded, it's an additional one point five million over what you'll see on the next slide. Also, transportation is budgeted to be fully funded. That's what they promised us. I put that here that it's a consideration because it is a categorical in the state education budget. And so it is a very easy, it's low-hanging fruit for them to cut if state revenues do not come in. And by fully funding, I mean that seventy-five percent of this year's actual expenditures reimbursed next year. Local revenue, it is a reassessment year, so it will come back to you in August with the tax rate hearing to set our tax rate for the year. I am budgeting for about two hundred and seventy thousand, increase to that. We are capped at two point nine percent growth, regardless of how much assessed valuation increases and all of that because of the Hancock Amendment. Also, a further rollback because we have to use a Prop C rollback. And our Prop C revenues continue to come in higher each and every year, which means that rollback amount that just is completely, it's just a rate that's deducted right off our tax rate calculation continues to increase. So I am anticipating only realizing about two hundred and seventy thousand in additional revenue from, from local sources. School calendar incentive, we're waiting, I'm not budgeting for that. If it goes through and passes for, to be kind of amended, that law that they passed last year to incentivize school districts to have a hundred and sixty-nine day school calendar, which we do. Right now, I believe there's no provision for inclement weather days that we don't make up. So we're waiting for the legislature to amend that bill. And if that happens, then we're looking about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in revenue for that incentive. And then school voucher expansion, put that there only because if they do approve to put more money into school vouchers, but all that does is take money away from public education. Just something to keep an eye on there. Okay, overall revenues review, projections for fiscal year twenty-five, just under fifty-six million dollars. These are just operating revenues. Just under fifty-six million. Budgeted revenues right now of just over fifty-six million. It's only an increase right now of ninety-two thousand. Again, if the foundation formula ends up being fully funded, which fingers crossed it will, have little ways to go. I think the budget is due at May fifteenth. Is that right, at the state level? That would be an increase of about one point five million. So praying that would, because that would fully cover our salary proposals for this evening. So expenditures review, projected ending total expenditures for this year, again, just over fifty, sorry, just under fifty-six million. Budgeted expenditures for next year, fifty-eight million. That's an increase of two point two. That, those figures do include all the salary proposals, the added staff. What it doesn't include is any, it's just a flat percentage increase for purchase services and supplies. We are still actually gathering data. We had another meeting this morning with the director trying to hone in our expenditures for next year. So those have yet to be entered and pulled together. So those will definitely change for next year, hopefully down, but I don't know yet, so. Every time I pull that all together, I kind of hold my breath, see where, see where it comes out, so make sure I didn't enter one too many zeros somewhere. So looking at ending fund balances and projected, so for fiscal year twenty-five, this current year, projecting a surplus of right about thirty-one thousand dollars. Probably will be a little bit more than that. We have, I know we only have about two more months, but it's actually a lot of, there's a lot of buying that happens in bills that we pay in these last couple of months. So the ending fund balance is projected to be just under thirty-one percent. That fund balance percentage is inclusive of a two million dollar transfer to the capital projects fund, okay? The budgeted deficit right now to completely estimate for next year, I guess it always is, it's a budget anyway, is a negative. It's a deficit to, just over two million dollars. And then ending fund balance percentage of just under twenty-three percent. And again, our floor for fund balance percentage is seventeen. So that gives us about three months or so of ability to continue operating, assuming we have pretty much zero revenues, which extremely unlikely. So all that being said, we are very comfortable tonight presenting to you the salary proposals of the one point four million increase because of our healthy fund balance that we currently have. We do definitely acknowledge that we need to keep an eye on things that are happening at the state level, also at the federal level, to see how those will in the future affect our revenues and ability to continue offering these pay increases, so. Are there any questions?
Kendra, I'm sorry. You can go ahead. I was just gonna ask, you know, we did a little hourly rate increase this year because of the minimum wage increase that that's supposed to increase again next year. I know we don't have to, but I know that it definitely helps being able to fill those positions when we are and you've got us at fifteen eighty-seven, we would still be above that minimum wage, but is there a point?
We will definitely have to look at that. That is on my list of things to evaluate over the next fiscal year as that continues to, to increase. Because if I remember correctly, that increases then by CPI after this next year. And we probably would still be okay, but we would end up being really close to minimum wage, I believe, if we don't start making some, some bigger, larger headway there.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question.
Well, on that comment, our budget doesn't go up by the CPI, which is a problem. Our revenue doesn't go up.
Correct.
And sooner our labor later, we're gonna get squeezed. So I bring this up because I reviewed the salary survey you sent me and I looked at our schedule. And I've been to a couple sessions at MSBA, I think, Sharla, Tracy, you went to the last one, where they're talking about revisiting salary schedules and how they're put together. We have a lot of columns and what Linda Quinley suggested is that you don't need all those columns, that you can compress those and increase your beginning teacher salaries, which is one of the triggers on the Senate Bill seven twenty-seven. So what I would propose is that you take a look at getting the committee together and looking at that this next year. I know we've got a lot of things on our plate. So I was reviewing it, so I thought I'd bring that up as a comment tonight.
Well, that's something the salary committee could look at too, in, in the district plus other people involved.
It is, but it's, Linda provides consulting through MSBA, and it may need to be a subcommittee of that salary committee. The salary committee needs to look at it.
Right, right.
Yeah. For some of those columns, we don't have a lot of teachers in the column. We have ten columns. A lot of the schools only have six, and so in that survey, there was a lot of, you know, not applicable for schools on a lot of those because they don't have that, they don't have that, yeah, so.
I have actually reached out to Mrs. Quinley about that. I emailed her shortly after we discussed last time and I apologize for not following up with you. We absolutely can, can study that. When I questioned her on that and what the benefit is, she, and I have the email. She said there really isn't a huge benefit because especially if you don't already have people on those levels, you're basically still going to pay the same amount or you're going to increase. What it can do, what we risk is morale when we do that. So we would definitely want to study that.
Yeah.
And come back to you.
My thought is you move the people over, you don't decrease their salary, you increase it. And your base becomes higher and at what cost is the question, so.
Well, I absolutely don't mind reaching back out to her.
Morale's a big question.
It is.
Her opinion in structuring salary is to let people earn more earlier. Yeah, so.
Well, I'm sure we'll see her again at the MSBA conference this fall and we can talk to her somewhere there as well. I think that'd be great.
I would assume there'll be another session.
I would assume so, yeah, definitely.
All right. Any other questions for Mrs. Atkinson? All right. If not, it looks like you need a motion this evening.
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the salary schedule as presented.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I suppose, say no.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Fulton again. Presenting to us our twenty-six, twenty twenty-six Building and Grounds Budget Action. I guess you need action at the end.
So I would just keep in mind as we go through this, this is for all of our regular buildings and grounds. This doesn't deal with anything with the tornado in our, in our response, okay? Okay. Because you're gonna see some things on here and you're gonna go, but, but, yeah, this is all for our regular things. Have we not had a tornado? Okay. So in meeting with Mr. Kelly in regard, in going over for our budget meetings and buildings and grounds, there are, and you have all of the documents in the spreadsheet in your files, so in that, all of the costs that are associated in general things, inspection, service contracts, general facility repair and maintenance, this year we did add EPM Building Automation Services as an additional, a little bit of money in there for ongoing. And, oh, nope, sorry, that was already there. It's the added contracted HVAC repairs is what we added this year. So just to keep going on and moving forward with those. And again, with equipment. Going into our schools, Wyman Elementary, we do have some tile in there that we have been taking out in phases, which is asbestos tile. It is sealed right now, so it is not in any danger, but it will have to come out and it requires a special process to abate all of that. So we're looking at taking that out with the non-friable tile on the mastic and then painting classrooms, which is on a schedule. We paint so many every year. Questions about Wyman? Again, does not include anything with the tornado at this point. Mark Twain, again, nothing with the tornado. In this building, things were going pretty well. Upgrading plumbing in one of the boys' restrooms, so from that nineteen fifties and sixties, plumbing needs to be some upgrades. You would have to, you may have to reload yours to see this presentation, so.
Okay.
Reload, you'll find it, but you have all the paperwork in there, so.
It says twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, well, anyway, this is it. It's all on the paperwork. It's there, okay.
But it is in the twenty-five, twenty-six, the documentation.
Go to the live, you'll see it there. They probably won't be able to see it because it's not shared with them, so. It's right here. Just hold that thought.
Okay.
Okay.
No problem.
So at Truman, we're gonna widen the parking lot approach of the, of the, of the parking lot and the parent drop-off lane. It's a little narrow there, so widen it, so it's a little bit easier to get in and out. Rolla Middle School, asphalt the upper parking lot and then replace the carpet in the entrances and the offices. So replacing the carpet, the entrances, it has all those ridges in it. It's very hard to vacuum. So we're gonna replace that with more of a, of a, just one level carpet that's easier to clean for everyone. It'll look better. You're gonna see that several places. Rolla Junior High, that building's going pretty well. Replacing the cabinets in two fourteen, that is the home ec room on the sewing side. Track comes underneath Rolla Junior High because they manage the, all of the assignments that go over there. So replacing the sinks at the tracks in the bathrooms at that parking lot. Also, instead of having all the cones out there, we're gonna try and stripe that for the car pickup lines. And then create an area for the concrete dumpster at, for the area at the track. Rolla High School, several things here. Replace the grease trap in the kitchen. Replace carpet in the entryways, same reason as before. Also with the construction there, our entryway carpets took a beating, so replacing those. Replacing the tile and the Tenth Street hallway. That is the hallway right behind the auditorium. So it took a little bit of a beating in the, in the construction as well. Paving of the parking lot, phase two. So phase two, last year we did the park to the left over here. This time is this way. Remember, we are replacing and redoing all of that in phases. The next item on there will be adding a sidewalk on this side of the gym. It will come right in this vicinity. Again, the photo is old because it still shows us under construction, but it is going right in there. People walk along the road as they're, as they are walking down, as cars are coming up, so we're gonna put a sidewalk right there.
Just real quick.
Yes, that is the one we talked about before.
Yes.
Could you go back for just a second? Also, as you're, that little corner right there where it says phase two, there's a little, there is a, a chunk out of the curb there.
Yes.
Are you gonna fix that while you?
They are. Uh-huh. Yes, they will do all of that at that time. Okay. Questions? Okay. RTI, there is some fascia that needs covered with metal on the first and second wings. And then remove some tile in the building trades classroom and polish the concrete. It'll be easier just to work in there with, with the polished concrete. RTC and Central Office, paint the front entryway and add, and add up a curb ramp at the west end of our building for our, in our parking lot here.
That's the, if you go out the west end of the building onto the sidewalk to the dumpsters, there's a curb. There's no ramp.
There's no ramp.
So the custodians are trying to take things out of the building.
They're having to dump it down.
So we're gonna put a curb ramp there. Get in and out with their carts and trash cans.
Transportation and maintenance, a few years ago, they cleared out all of that lot and expanded it in the back. Some of that you saw today had, you know, the fence and the trees down, but it's time to continue to expand that, add, adding gravel in there. And then one of our snowplows that we named had, died and needs to be replaced, so. I think he'll get the name. I'm not sure which name it was, but one of our snowplows died over the summer, over the winter. And in summary, in FY twenty-five, we were asking for basically one point two million. This time, we are asking a little bit of one point one million, a difference of ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. So I need a motion to approve the Buildings and Grounds Budget Report for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Please.
I have a question.
Yes.
You were talking about removing some of the tile, some asbestos tile, I believe. Will you be putting new tile in or will you do concrete floors, the polished concrete?
Could be a bit of both depending upon where it is. Some of the classrooms, they've requested just to polish the concrete. And in the hallways, there will be tile going back if it is in any of the hallways in the classrooms.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're working with the insurance company and then also a separate quote to, to finish the asbestos removal from Wyman.
While we are, while we are out.
It'll be significantly cheaper and we can get that work done before we go to move back. So that's the goal. So we're trying to cross-reference those and get the bids in order to get that done.
If you get it done before school's out, then they're usually looking for work.
Yes.
Right.
That's, that's our goal.
Yes. So we have some quotes out there.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Building and Grounds Budget for twenty-five, twenty-six.
I'll second.
All right, great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I suppose, say no.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, moving on now to comments, the superintendent's report.
I want you to do Maria first.
I'm Maria.
I don't want to steal, I don't want to steal her thunder.
So I wanted to talk, you know, I know we talked a lot about the tornado tonight and we heard about staff, we heard about admin, we heard about maintenance people. I want to talk about the students because that's my job, to talk about the students. At the high school, Hayden Brooks, Lillian Webb and J.T. Rogers, who have been recognized all throughout the community for great reason, scheduled community cleanups, I believe the entire week that we have deemed tornado week, which is the week that we were not in school before spring break. Now, most high schoolers, I feel like, would see an extra week of spring break and go, I'm going back to bed. I'm gonna take a little nap. I'm gonna take some time off. But all we wanted to do was go and see each other. We couldn't sit at home and do nothing. We couldn't watch this. It was horrible. It was very sad. We just wanted to be together and do something to help, and they made that possible for all of us. I think there was upwards of two hundred kids there at nine AM on that Monday morning. That Monday morning, the first day of that week where you're supposed to have off, there was two hundred kids there. We went all across town helping clean up branches and talk to people and just be involved and to make sure the community was being strengthened back to its normal level like it should be. And so I think that that is a really, really important thing to note because it is a testament to our community and to our district and to its students and how dedicated and how special it truly is. I've maybe never been more proud to be a part of Rolla High School than that morning when I showed up and saw everyone hugging each other and, you know, just excited to be there and to see their friends and their family. We're like a family and it was really special to see that. On that note, I had some friends who were at the middle school performing Chicago when the tornado hit. And it was devastating because I know how much work they put in. It was months and months and the back and forth of, will it be here? Will it be here? And they deserved every accolade and every. And they deserved every accolade and every round of applause and every standing ovation in the world, and they did not get that the first go around. So they're coming in May, they're going to be in the high school auditorium. I ask that as many people can go, go, because they deserve it. They deserve it the first time.
Absolutely.
They surely deserve it this time. And so I just want to put that on your radar, that that is coming up. And I don't know exactly how ticket sales are going to work. I'm sure they're going to have to reimburse the people that already had bought tickets for that original showing, but the high school auditorium is a lot bigger than the middle school auditorium, so there should be more tickets to go around.
That's right.
And so I hope that if there are more seats available and there's more people able to go, that I will see lots of you there because it is a big deal to them, which makes it a big deal to me.
Do you know how many shows they're going to have?
I think they're going to do two. They were going to do three, but they're going to do two.
Okay.
Because they're going to count that one as one, even though it wasn't the full show, and then they're going to do two more. So please, please go and support our theater program. They do amazing things, and they deserve it. And that's really all I have for you tonight. Thank you. Welcome.
Except that there's a big party coming up.
Oh, yes, prom, prom is next week. How could I forget? It's all anyone talks about right now, is prom. That's next week. Junior class, I've been planning it. It's the first dance I've ever been to that I have had pretty much no hand in. I have no idea what's going to happen. I'm just going to enjoy the good time. Everyone's excited. Tickets are going on sale next week, and it'll be a good thing to have some normal right now. So just go and enjoy prom and have a good night. So now that's all I have, I think, unless you want to add more things, then I can talk forever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. All right.
All right, so I had a feeling that I was going to steal Maria's thunder, so I'm glad we let her go first. Thank you for talking about the student response. Very happy to report the State Board of Education does a, a kind of a recognition of sorts, similar to what we do at their board meetings. They don't do those typically in person. They have some videos and things that they do, but we're going to try to get those three students who organized all that in next board meeting. But at the May State Board Meeting, the, I believe it was Spox News that did the news report on the student efforts, is the feature for the State Board of Education meeting. So our Ralla students are opening the State Board of Education meeting, and that's incredible. And I agree, Maria, something to be very proud of, and talk about an army. It was an army of folks, yeah.
Yeah.
Continuing along the lines of how amazing our community is, we had the Show Me Scholars and Tech Masters Luncheon for the Chamber of Commerce yesterday. Wow, it seems like forever ago. It was yesterday. Just kind of as a little reminder for everyone, those are students who are challenged to take a little more rigorous coursework and apply themselves. There's some, basically some fairly straightforward requirements for that, but we had eighty-five seniors that qualified for that scholarship program. The Show Me Scholars Program awards thousand-dollar scholarships for next steps in life, so it's for college or tech school, even workforce needs, for those going straight into the workforce, military, there's all kinds of paths and avenues there. The Chamber raises that money for those scholarships. It's rooted in Pride Night, so it's, you know, Pride Night starting in the fall, but supported throughout the year by multiple businesses and individuals. Again, this year, there were eighty-five seniors eligible for the scholarship. Going into the luncheon, there were seventy-three scholarships available, so the Chamber had raised seventy-three thousand dollars. So I will pause there and say what an incredible thing that is, just in and of itself. But before the luncheon started, suddenly there were eighty-five scholarships available. So twelve thousand dollars was raised on the spot in the room, which is also incredible. I am not going to try to name the businesses and individuals that are involved in that because it's pretty much everybody in town at different levels, and I do not want to forget anyone. But on behalf of our student body, I do want to say thank you to our community supporters for making this happen. It is truly amazing. It is eighty-five thousand dollars in direct scholarships. That's a record, a record amount raised, and it's pretty incredible for those students there, for every single kid in that room to walk out of there with an award. And the energy in the room is amazing. It's pretty incredible, and so that, that doesn't happen without the amazing community, and we truly are very blessed in that regard. Along those same lines, Senior Awards Night is next Thursday night, the twenty-fourth, at the high school at six PM. Last year, we had over a million dollars in local scholarship money. I'm looking at Gina, make sure I'm not telling you the wrong thing there. That's not counting the money that the college has given that. That's local scholarship dollars. So once again, if you want to, want to feel good about life and the things that we do here, those are kind of those culminating things where we see the, the benefits to the students, and they're so deserving, so we, I can't say enough about the appreciation for that.
Did you say six o'clock?
Six o'clock is what I have. I hope that's right.
Where will it be?
Yep, Gina's nodding, okay.
Is it the auditorium this time?
Auditorium, yes. Auditorium. Core Breakfast of Champions, Monday morning, seven-thirty. You do not have to pay for breakfast, we'll feed you. They will feed you, I should say. Core will feed you. But Gina would like you to contact her, to RSVP, so that we can make sure we have enough food. It's kind of an important piece. But we would invite everyone to come, learn about Core and their mission of supporting our students and staff, learn a little bit about the history, some of their upcoming projects and the things that they've done in the past. Should be about an hour program roughly, so if you can give up an hour Monday morning, come see us at the Junior High Cafeteria and learn a little bit more about the school foundation. And then just a few reminders, no school Monday, so it is a professional involvement day. This one is the one that I enjoy the most. We've shifted the name, and we call this Elevate now. This is our staff for the last part of the day. Our professionals, our expertise, our experiences shared with our other staff members. So our staff members sign up to do presentations and present information. The other staff can sign up and choose which ones they think are beneficial to them, but we have a lot of very talented people, and it's great that we can share that knowledge amongst our people. So I enjoy this one the most. Reminder about our Nap Family Track Complex dedication on May thirteenth at five. That'll be at the track. If the weather is not good, we will move that into the Junior High Cafeteria, but invite everyone out to come for that. And this has actually come up a couple times, and Gina brought, brought it up again today. Graduation is May eighteenth at two-thirty. May eighteenth to two-thirty, that's at Gil Bowman at S&amp;T. Would urge everyone, Google is great and Google AI is fantastic, but if you type Ralla graduation, you might get Ralla, North Dakota or somewhere. So be mindful that sometimes you get what you ask for. And so be careful with that information, but May eighteenth at two-thirty for that, and your seniors will scout tickets for you.
Yes, they will.
That's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Chair. All right, now we want to just pay attention to our written reports.